Nick had Dewey Mattson.
Oh, yeah, Dewey Mattson. Do we look at it?
Yeah, so it's back up and running within a day.
What, new batteries in the bill?
Yep. I'm in the wire, whatever corroded wire problem there is.
Well, that's good.
Talk about extra stress though. In that moment of trying to get out the door.
Yeah, click. Yeah. Tina, how you doing, Nick?
I'm fine. Fine, fine, fine.
Did you guys get the training report?
No, uh, Mike got a tape here.
That's the SOP. I just don't have this camera. You know, I put it in a...
I think the red one.
I put it in a... Scratchy. I actually didn't.
Just a copy.
Alright, thanks. Thank you for... For making them up. What did you do? Just work off the records that they had?
No.
Okay.
You have my voice? How you doing? Tina? Sorry, what?
Um, I didn't want to do that.
Oh, I didn't. I didn't get it on, maybe we can hear.
Yeah. Not for me, I turned it on.
No, no, no.
Exterior. What's that?
The exterior area one.
Was it on again? Yeah, it was.
It was? That's your works.
Hello?
No, I got it.
Tina, I just tried to call you.
But I'm here.
But you were busy here.
But I'm here.
I know. And your husband doesn't answer that call.
Maybe he's not good.
Yeah, maybe he's gone, went to catch it.
No, he's supposed to be coming down.
Cheater box is small.
I think so. Hopefully. Okay.
So I was following that pleasure for first two or three, because I know if somebody wanted to come and follow, I'd kind of be all, it's melting.
Oh, but Eric is such a good person.
Yeah, everything, totally got you.
Yeah.
If I had to wheel around.
Oh, what were you talking about?
No, it's just like sixty. It's rolling one that we go along.
Oh, probably more than twenty. Yeah.
That's it.
So there isn't enough.
There's one.
That's it here, Eric, but.
I mean, people. It's all the way around the circle.
I didn't know.
Can't do that.
Oh, that's okay.
Well, yeah. Is there a battery box? Ready? Two batteries, a battery charger?
Well, I mean, mostly they got a range of the thing.
Cable that connects it to.
I don't bring my cable.
Needs to do that.
It is what it is.
I have it on the agenda, so.
Yeah, but that's... That's actually a little tricky.
Yeah, actually.
Change from. This was like fifteen eighty, so they're done right out on their lips, they don't forget about it.
That works.
Hey, you have a look in.
Um, for your own?
I'll check and see.
Okay.
This is a new publication.
Okay.
Thirteen fifty.
This one, what was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, except, um, Mike was asking, yeah, it's a gas stand, so, yeah. If you have, if you have Timbaland, it's good.
Timbaland.
You know, it's nothing.
Something's that seem.
But he has to read everything.
No, but I mean, I went to this.
Alright.
He does, yeah.
Maybe the thirteenth pair.
Well, I thought.
Got a dozen.
Yeah.
Happens to be in one of his pockets.
Somebody separated, yes.
Did you check your inside pocket?
Yes. I used to.
It doesn't make you feel great.
Right.
What's this?
That is a two-year-old, uh... Work from Wire Iron, where they went out from that hole.
I mean, do we just get it?
He just got it. Yeah, I'm not seeing that I sent you this last year.
They got it on the center.
Oh, that's this, really? Oh. Oh, okay. Oh, well. I... People play this like commercials.
Yeah, so glad I could spend any of those on council meeting.
I do.
I could talk about it early, I am.
Well.
We had actually planned on it. I have a January sort of like a proposal.
Date of first.
Yeah, he didn't want to.
Oh, I don't know, but we were discussing on.
I'm sure that would be a spring.
I know.
Gross. When is twenty?
Because, you know, whether you like our current price there.
Guess what?
We can have one point five, one point seven trillion dollar infrastructure.
Just roll the brand new press.
Hey, if we can get this.
Time? Hey, you gotta play the game that you're in, you know? So, yeah, I'm on board, so.
That's why.
There's money there for us.
Which is, yeah.
Five years, I've been on.
It's coming our way, that's good.
Well, I think, well, that's why we need. Some form of, so we're gonna be on these, all these less teenage grants and.
That's my stuff.
I don't think it's bad. Less utilizing than we care. Right, and, and, you know, if we can resource it, it's gonna take, you know, checking the right.
I figured it out. We got a year of water power.
No.
Two years. There's another year. The water power, depending on your lifespan, it's only seventy years long. So it's got thirty years.
I don't know.
And you divide that by two is fifteen, well, fifteen times fifty thousand. Eighty-five hundred thousand. Plus usually the. Maybe a little less.
Yeah.
I think there's enough coffee there to look with. Right. Yeah, it's just gonna.
Where's the money's away from us to get it for? It isn't for.
Thank you.
Hope you guys might give.
Not sure you're in the right direction.
Take her.
Other pencil? What are you talking about? Yeah, we didn't put a year on it.
Add a little something. As he speak him. Sorry. A little thirst and pride, don't you?
That's a battle, huh?
Yeah.
Don't have too much.
Bad piece of cutting move ahead before I built the chat.
Sure.
Well, the edge is. Let me man down. Make two more. Whatever. I stopped. It's not, it's not a picture.
They look good. Yo. Huh? I tried, I did.
Yo, I couldn't, I did it here and.
What are you reading to?
There's a little, they'll say that you pass.
Not working in the same old day. Pictures of. I need a few of them. No, I didn't. I'm gonna place them there.
That's not. Yeah, when you go. It's like a bad knock.
You don't fail.
But there was, uh...
No, we didn't get anything. Spider, spider.
Said that I.
Kelvin major rust.
See, I'm one of those dust.
Rust on a little bit.
I just turned it in.
Red indications. I'm gonna get that out. Couple of defusers out there, too. Hopefully there's not more of that.
Kitchen.
Little pity in there. I don't know. Their numbers. In real.
Yeah, I guess I don't know. The big.
Yeah. Right, hot on video. I don't wish for it.
I'm thinking because there's.
I shouldn't just wear, buy one of those.
Just a bar handle?
No. It'll be a dysfunction.
By spend.
The color was saying. Kind of like, kind of like.
No, no, it's like you. That's just the one.
No, you're not, you're not, there's a one. You just get a chain on it, that's why I get them, I have it on.
Look at the right, my log tag, because apparently you're gonna get the asset, we're here yet.
We'll just.
I like the curio.
One of you all said here, you had a. I didn't want to walk in.
Yeah.
Start your suit on here.
Come and put it on.
I'd have to get one right now.
I'll anchor the left flank over here if you could turn those places.
It's not a staple. Yeah, came out there.
Staple very well. You want to sell pictures? Color? Might not follow you.
I saw those.
Communicating.
Well, when they cut. What was the name of that?
MSA. The name, where did I have that? Engineering firm. Um, we're doing the spirit.
Responsible.
Creepy. I'm looking at a big letter. The bigger one.
How long? No, I just, I took them all.
My own ways, but I do work for, for I. You know, you gotta have some more. Grail on the basket.
Except for a flavor. That'd be probably empty, it will be over there.
What they want, they can do up to seventeen.
Sorry, yeah.
You know, first, it's in the.
Definitely.
Period first.
You got somebody who's signing, you know. You got them. By even a lot.
That's what I was just gonna look at.
How many dollars?
Thirty dollars. With seventeen hundred dollars.
It sounds. So. Right.
I, that's cool, impression like that. You can interpret it anybody wants. Oh, yes, yes. All the meaning to order. Fudge believed it. Fudge believed it.
To the fight in the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think this is a little record. Thank you one and all for coming out. Tell us, Kevin River, as is tradition, even though we have a pretty short agenda, we have a lot of people here, as is tradition, we invite guests, or guests are... Top the list. So, number one is Brad Cooper. Won't you like a movie or something?
I can only wish.
He's not that rich.
I was kinda good looking, I thought. Uh, I am Brad Cooper with the Red Riders. Most of us met before when we did the other meeting. I'm the Montauk Kettle Days blog. I've got Charlie, Vice President, and Joe Brown, Secretary. Thanks. Okay, uh... It might look like a lot, but I read Vegas, because I can't read. Montauk Kettle Days is a special event for our club, where riders are donating their time and energies to make our park organized, fun and safe. We're not here to make money, virtually all proceeds from the gate, entrance fees. Any sponsor money goes back to the participants of the event. With that in mind, the more you offer, the more spect, the more spectators show up, the more high-performance series trucks show up, the more people that come into the community. And this will in turn bring more to the city of Montauk Kettle Days. The entire club is honored and excited to be, to be part. We have numerous meetings and teleconferences with some of the Montauk Community members. We have Ben Parko, our resident egg truck owner operator. We have a performance series promoter, Matt with Mud Rhythms, kind of on board, other sponsors, and then we've also had meetings with Corolla Daylin, with the County Land Management Office. The reason we're in question with council's time is again to discuss current dog and classification. In a previous meeting, there was even approval for additional land that was donated by the city to help enlarge in the area. However, with research and planning, it's been brought to our attention that the current area is surrounded and considered Class Six wetland. Everybody's ever had to deal with wetlands, it's not, it's not a fun issue. The original area has sort of a grandfather clause in design due to its establishment prior to the nineteen ninety-one classification. In this, it was highly suggested that we work with Montauk Kettle Inc. to do a wetland, no loss, exempt replacement plan, even for the current area. To have them come down to the site survey and see what it, it looks like compared to its respective pictures and make sure that everything's on the up and up with, with it. With that, for the discussion, the general rules apply. It sounds like very minimal change, if any, can be done with the area. The way it works is you do that, wetland determination, minimal, no loss, however they're gonna do it. Fill out the application, it's a fifty-dollar fee, county comes down, they survey the area, they look at your map, what, what you have, what you wanna do, and they give you their determination on what you can and can't do with, within the wetland restriction. In that, there's some broad rules of ten thousand square feet of de minimis, okay? That works only when you have a large parcel of land. When the parcels are of this size and smaller, even with the additional lands, what they do is they take five percent of the entire area. So, and now it's point six nine acres, even with the additional, let's just call it an entire acre. We'd get five percent of one acre that we could change in considered wetland, which doesn't give us really the operating parameters.
So no goal.
For, for.
What he said, no goal.
Yeah.
The reader's digest version is, yes, it's.
For what we're gonna do, we can't with that parcel.
Okay, so that parcel is dead to you. Gotcha.
Close, close to dead, got a heartbeat or two, kinda still pulse.
Real slow one.
Real slow one. So what we've come up with after talking with Corolla at the county office, and we've looked at the mapping and that, and we've looked at Kettle River, city-owned properties, upland areas, that wouldn't be affected by such a restriction. Okay? There is a parcel number, one nine, one four zero, 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 four, zero. You know, that means nothing to most. However, if you think about it, just to the east of the ball field and park pavilion is a row of pine trees. Just behind that row of pine trees is that three point one, nine acre parcel. In that, that parcel is an upland area, it's not under wetland constraints, except for the very northern, probably ten percent. And that's still covered in trebary and whatnot. So what we'd like to discuss is.
So basically, that's your goal, if you guys let us.
Yeah, do you guys have any specific proposals in mind as far as what you exactly wanna do with that parcel?
Well, in working with Matt with Mud Rhythms, he's a high-performance series promoter, he does track design, he sets up events like this a lot, so he knows what... What event style of trucks require in order to run. Our series is quite a bit smaller, we have a lot less limitation, but in order to incorporate, the bigger, the better, the best, or the stuff that brings in the more crowds, brings in the more spectators, brings in people into the community, we need to kinda have a larger opportunity, like, like we said in the previous meetings, if you've been to the other... Well, except for last year's, it didn't happen, if you re-event the years before that, it was on a slow decline, because the current area just isn't up to par. Because the current area just isn't up to par. The bigger trucks that tried to run it, had, had a really difficult time. They couldn't perform like they should. They couldn't put on a show for the crowd, they just couldn't perform.
Right, so if I may, how big of a parcel are you looking at that would be acceptable or fit into the plans that you have? You, the whole nine acres or?
No, it's three, three point one nine acres, sorry. I was, maybe I was, it's a three point one nine acre parcel.
Okay, and that would be closer to the ball field? Do you have a map of the plotted out of?
I, I have my truck.
Yeah.
Your truck.
Car.
I can try and find it.
And not to interrupt, but if that was given to Montauk, then there would be no responsibility, no legal anything to the city. But that Montauk would give it back to the city when and if it never, ever needed to be. So that we could take all responsibility and it would go back on the tax, but I suppose right now it's not on the taxes. We would then pay taxes on it to the city. And the Montauk would be responsible in insurance history. So, it would be no possible server to the city. And also then if that piece of land needed to be used by the city in future times, if the city needed that back or something, it would take. Montauk is owned by you guys, so you would just get it back.
I don't know what exactly.
Yeah, you're a corporation, Montauk is a corporation, it's a nonprofit, I believe.
We are a five oh one C four, we're the same as the fire department.
Right.
And so, we, we can, we can own a piece of land like that and ensure non-pet taxes. And do exactly what we were doing with the mud, that's why the mud block was given to us in the first place.
Right, okay.
And we do have an insurance company right now.
Okay, underwritten for months, you think is necessary?
Well, right now, it just gets written for the event.
What, what kind of, what kind of deep pockets are we talking about? I mean, we'd have to probably, you know, talk numbers here as far as liabilities and indemnities.
Right, it's, it's all this, it's always decided when the event comes, so. The policy is written when the event happens and it covers, it covers the event.
I think he means like a million dollars for incident.
How much money are you gonna be paying out if somebody, you know?
Well, I, I have about, I have the policy here, but it's written in conjunction, Bernadine sees it every year. Yeah, but it, it's, it's all exactly what the city wants. I mean, it's plenty of money.
Do we run this by a lawyer at all? I think we should just at least consult him and then see if there's any downsides to it. You know, I'm just trying to play, say, I'm all for what's, what you guys are proposing here. Because what you're talking about is an enterprise, it's gonna bring new life into, into a dying city, the, the event, so.
The money and the insurance policy is the exact same that we've always done every year. So, it's always, already been fixed.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll see. Dave. I'll, I'll.
Not throw monkey wrench in it, but that does lay within the wellhead protection area there.
See, that's a big concern.
Okay.
I'd like to address that if I may.
Yeah, sure.
I had Bernadine email me the previous, I know you're redoing the ten year plan right now. Previous water plan, protection area. The, the three point one acre parcel was part of a development site that the city had future outreach plan. They were gonna put the city sewer, sea water, and develop the new city building and senior housing in that area. In that, what, what we're, what, what, what we're asking for is not to, to, we're not gonna be on it year round. We're not gonna have sewer, we're not gonna have, yes, we're gonna have trucks and vehicles for gas and oil and antifreeze and that. For basically one weekend, one day a year. It's not a constant truck park, it's not a, you know, we're not parking trailer houses over there, we're not doing that kinda thing. It's an area for the Montauk Kettle Days, the event.
Understood.
For that, that weekend. I, 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 that was on my, I don't have all my stuff in it. I got blue screen of death today, it wasn't very good, that's why everything I have is handwritten.
Well, the issue that I, those wells are less than fifty feet deep.
Yep, one is forty.
That sand and, that sand and gravel over there, it's not clay. So, there's no, if something goes in, it goes down.
Right. On track design, well, let me address the, the wellhead area. The only limitations I could find in your entire program that came close to what we have going on over there besides, because you have road traffic. The, the wellhead protection area is about thirty-eight acres just over the aquifer. The, what drinking water protected area is actually about a hundred and twenty acres. By layout, okay, which covers part of the city, part of housing and stuff and whatnot. The drain off is the sandy, loomy sand, mega loomy sand or whatever. Yes, it does have a great permeability rate. However, wouldn't be, what we're doing in one day would be any different than, let's say, a farmer doing hay on it with a tractor and a couple pieces of implement. If a tractor blows a radiator hose or blows a implement hydraulics or anything like that, it would be no different. If you look at, when the event comes, if you look at, say Ben's truck, even our trucks. You might look, very on the outside, mine's nineteen eighty-seven Chevrolet. I've got thirty thousand dollars wrapped up into that little truck. They're well maintained because we do what we do with them. I mean, it's not like we're driving a Pinto up there in the field and packing her up.
No, I'm, I'm not trying to cut you down or anything like that, but I just, I'm just trying to say.
I'm just trying to make that a.
Right, one, one second, you know, so, Dave, who is the regulating authority on the wellhead protection area? Who, like, makes the rules?
Department of Health is who.
So, we would need to consult them, is what my guess is. You know, and, and see if, you know, what you're proposing is going to fit within that okayness.
Under the, under the state guidelines that are in the eighty-six page report, the only setbacks that are required are actually around the wellhead themselves.
Right.
Not that.
I, I don't, I don't doubt all your research knowledge and, and information that you come up with, but I, I feel that we need to talk to the guys that make the rules. You know, and, and certainly, you know, addressing their rules is valid, you know, and hopefully, and hopefully you will prevail. Because it sounds like a fricking good idea.
Well, time is crucial here at this point.
What do we talk about time to me? What are you talking about now?
Well, in the, in, in the way, the way, yeah, the way, the way it works is.
Ideally by springtime, you wanna get going on.
Well, we gotta get promotions going.
Promoters and, and, like I said, we've got, we've got Matt from the. Mud Rhythms, thank you, onboard, but he's a mega truck and he's a larger truck, series promoter.
So.
So, in order for.
Good, I get, I get the urgency here, okay. So, Dave, who would you talk to? Would you talk to Mike or, or?
We'd talk to who would help us with the, Chris.
Chris Parthen? Okay.
Can I also add something to this too? As far as the depth of these tanks and whatnot being underground, the tracks that we race on can all be built on top of the ground with zero disturbance. We bring, bring dirt in and go on top of it instead of digging down.
You don't have to convince me, you have to convince Chris, the guys that, like I say, the wellhead protection guys. I'm all for you guys, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to rain on your parade and I understand the urgency here. But I wanna run it by the rules because, you know.
Or drinking water.
How, how quickly can we do that?
That's what I was just trying to get at with Dave, because I can make it.
I have no time for you for sure. You know, you probably have to have your plan, Bernadine has a copy of it, what you're gonna do to prevent, you know, if you're gonna do a containment or something, and then that's something you give to him. Because I mean, I mean accidents happen, you know that too. Water can blow, so they can throw, throw out through, crank and everything.
It'd be more like a definition of what you want.
Your proposal, and it would probably have to be something in writing with maps and depths and, and detail kinda deal. I, we, don't get me wrong, we wanna, we want you guys to do this and it be successful because it needs success for us. That's what I'm reading here, you know, no doubt about it, so, yeah, guy, go ahead.
You're talking that before you have this, you're gonna actually bring board dirt in on top, so when it's done, you can actually scrape that off and haul it out.
So, it's not going down.
Well, yeah, you're giving it deeper, so, but are you removing the containment?
If you did have a major spill, you could at least scoop that out.
Correct, if we did, yes.
But I mean, it gives you something to work with as far as cleaning this and you're not damaging anything.
And what we talk about here, I think, is besides what we need, the what needs to happen. What I believe needs to happen, which Dave brought up, is that we need to get the state on board with this, or else it's not gonna happen. So, if you guys can come up with something pronto, in writing, maps, details, etc.
Who do we get it to?
Give it to Dave, me, and Bernadine. You know, I, I got contacts for Chris as well, you know, so. Yeah, as detailed as you can, you know that dealing with the state is not easy or quick, so, it's, I don't know.
Is there any other place that, that in the city that you could go it?
We don't see any other city property.
The, the property to the south, where the street road goes through, where it actually stops, is still considered a lowland. There's some property, I wanna say to the, is that to the northwest?
I didn't see any other city property.
Do you know land?
Bernie?
But from your feasibility study, this is the only one that really makes any sense to you.
Well, what, what this, what this parcel does versus some of the other, other areas that we kinda had saw that were upland areas, where we wouldn't have a problem with land usage, was the distance from the core of town.
Yeah, the town.
This keeps us within shouting distance of the streets.
You got the trail right there, I, I get it, and there's a ball field, there's, there's a road that goes to the ballpark.
If we go to the other, the other areas.
Right.
Which wouldn't be completely horrible.
You've got land or something.
Yep, sorry, sir.
Todd.
Yep, according to the city ordinance, one five two dot zero eight two, this is the kinda thing that should, we should have a public hearing. It goes before Planning and Zoning Commission, because it is public land. Planning and zoning, we'll get a hold of the, the water guy, the state guy, all that stuff. You guys bring all your stuff, we, the public should be made aware of it, it's their water that they're gonna be drinking forever. You know, the, it doesn't have to be a drawn out process, we can call a public hearing at the discretion of the Planning and Zoning Board. Make the calls to get all the proper people, so everybody's covered, everybody's protected.
That, that sounds very reasonable, Todd, that sounds like a good idea. And again, these are not monkey wrenches that we're trying to throw at you, these are things that, you know.
How quickly can this be done though?
If you guys wanna pick out a day, I can call the state people, Chris, all these people, we can have their representative.
Like in a couple weeks.
Or, we can do it in a week.
Whatever speeds a little for you.
Do it in a week or two?
We can do it in, within a week or two.
Well, the, the, the decision on it lies with the body here. Right, and so, you can certainly put whatever pieces of the puzzle that you can together as quickly as you can, as good as you can, and report back to us. And, you know, I mean, with this idea, and I, I think that I, I, hopefully I don't overstep my bounds, but I think I speak for the rest of the council when I say that this sounds like a good idea. You know, I mean, would you guys, what do you guys think?
It's a good idea, as long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't mess with our, our water that we are drinking, you, I mean, you guys don't live here. So, I mean, what's it to you guys, is our water?
Well, we don't wanna hurt you guys.
I, I understand that, but, I'm just saying, it's, it's our water that we drink. And if we contaminate that, then we have nothing.
Right, so, so it's something that hopefully you guys can, you know, come to, you know, you know, come together with. But you need to come up with something on paper.
Once the Planning and Zoning Commission has, has done their work, the city council can request a, a vote, and we can do a.
It would be a quick meeting.
Quick meeting for a vote, vote on it, and then.
I think the idea is no pushback, let's just try to get it done until it is set up.
Todd, it's you, me, and Dave on the Planning and Zoning Committee, so I would ask you to, you know, to take, take charge on that and.
And I have some things to address too.
Okay. Okay, yep. I think you guys got some work to do before, you know, unfortunately.
You have to deal with Todd, you know, your email address, phone number. So, we can contact, or so we can contact you when, when we're time to have our, that meeting from that meeting.
Yeah, and Dave's? Who's gonna contact, well, you guys gotta come up with a plan and then we'll contact, it might be, be well if Dave could give Chris, or I could give Chris Parthen, who's with the Department of Health, a heads up on this proposed project. So, are you guys okay with Todd contacting Chris Parthen from the Department of Health and trying to get things organized? Okay. All right, Todd, are you ready for this game?
Yep.
All right. Jane.
I just wanna thank you guys for all your hard work on every half. I mean, you're, you're putting your nose to it and really appreciate it. Hope this doesn't discourage you and we can keep moving forward. Any help you need from us, let us know.
No, it sounds like a good idea, we've gotta do it methodically and by the rules.
Oh, absolutely, that's why we're here, and that's why we contacted the community.
Amen, amen, so let's get her done. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, we'll look forward to an early hearing from you kinda deal. Todd, you'll, you'll be in touch with.
Yep.
Okay, good. Uh, you're next up, Todd.
All right, going through the past ordinance, and when, back when the city put together the comprehensive land use plan. There's supposed to be a board put together that consisted of five members, and just with, with three, and with the duties and responsibilities that you have as, as mayor. I know Mr. Lucas is awful busy as well, and just working in Ohio. I think it's important that we have every two months that meeting, which would more than likely happen if we have a five member board. Just to put five people on a planning and zoning commission, just for the sake of bodies would be one thing, but I went out and I think I recruited a really good team. Mark Tollgar, he's used to late country power, he's a former fireman, he has experience in civil engineering that outmatches all of us. I think that would be a real credit, big cities would pay to have this guy on a planning and zoning board. Mr. Tollgar has agreed to take into it. Guy Callier, former businessman, one of the reasons the Planning and Zoning Commission is to promote business, bring business into this town. You have to have a guy that was in business, that knows how the inner workings of this town goes. Mr. Callier, also a former fireman, has given a service to the city, I think he's a spot on there. Marcia, or as we gotta call her now, Madam President, working really hard with the Montauk Kettle Committee. She's a longtime resident of the, of the city, she represents the elderly people. You need the comprehensive plan, our city is made up of a lot of elderly people and there's gonna be a lot more in the future. And we need somebody with, that's living in her position, I think would be a strong voice on the board. So, I would ask that, and then Mr. Lucas too, we have to have a city council representative that was appointed by the mayor, according to the rules. We did appoint him, he also has, I call him the urban agriculturist, I think, we would love to keep him.
He's got chickens.
A family man, and I'd like to ask the city to, to pass the board there for.
Guy, Mark, Marcia, you're on board with that?
Yep.
Discussion, we had the motion, maybe, I don't know, what do we got?
Since he's the planning, uh, president, commissioner, he has the obligation to do such things, and if calls work and.
They are an advisory board to this council, you know, so I think that we need to be okay with it, so I think there needs to be an official okay with it.
I'll make a motion to accept Mark, Guy, Marcia, Todd, and Dave for the zoning and planning commission.
Motion is made.
I'll second it.
And second it, further discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Tim Long?
Hi, I'm Tim Long. I'm here representing Genesis Wireless. They purchased Moose Tech wireless internet from the city of Moose Lake, actually January 1st. And, you know, we have equipment on the wirecar, and we did the tar agreement with the city, and we provide services to the city of Kettle River in exchange for that. We were asked to get our insurance information for you, and I think that's been turned in.
Right.
And just to let you know that we're putting together a power proposal, updated new agreement that you're always free to look at. We'll have that at your next meeting for you. And hopefully, I'm gonna try and get the owners up here, and meet you, and so you can meet them.
Where are they at?
They're out of Bram, Minnesota, and they've been running, they helped Moose Lake start Moose Tech thing in the first place, and they've been running internet throughout central Minnesota for about 20 years. They worked with lots of small public communities from Rock City to Sandstone, and they're just starting up in Malaca this spring now, and all the way over to Pine City and kind of the Wisconsin border and that area. So this is kind of a natural expansion for them. So anyway, if you have any other questions or any other information you'd like, I can convey that to them. They purchased, they're serious about being here. They purchased a building in Moose Lake for an office, and they hired the staff that we've had in Moose Lake to work here, so.
They're gonna be here, second to the day next month here?
Yep.
Oh, good.
Anything else, or?
The only thing I got to talk about last week was getting an agreement, a new updated agreement.
Yeah, yeah, and that's what I was trying to figure out. We'll work on that, and just have that figured out as well.
Cool.
If you have any other questions, I'm gonna need it.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Eagle's sperm.
Okay, next item on the agenda is consent agenda. I got a question about the, there has been some payroll checks that have been written, but I have not been contacted to sign them. I'm wondering how that happens, or how they get this first. What's that? Why wasn't I tried to be contacted at all? I mean, that's kinda like the way it's supposed to go. You know, are you trying to, you know, I'm available. Because when you were going on vacation, you wrote checks two weeks prior to, payroll checks prior to the payment. So I mean, this is something that doesn't all of a sudden happen at 10 o'clock in the morning, and you didn't know it beforehand. So please, I would ask that you make some plans, so that I, I'm available. I'm available. Not 24/7, but it's a statute from the state of Minnesota that the mayor should sign the checks, not the acting mayor, the mayor, okay? Anybody got a problem with that? Okay. I don't have a problem with that, sir. I was just gonna ask if we could be excused.
Oh, certainly, certainly.
I just didn't want to disrupt your meeting.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, my thanks for stepping up to the top tier.
That's needed. Yep.
All right. I guess consent agenda includes a post-pron $25 donation to Horn. So look for a motion on that consent agenda.
Motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion is made. And seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Administration Department?
Uh, just the regular work.
Okay. What does that include?
Answering telephone, waiting on customers, doing hearing reports, doing the agenda, doing the minutes.
I got you. Utilities Department?
I gave you a report in front of you. The only thing that I wanted to ask is that if anybody did know that where the paint was picked up, the Anthony Building?
I'm pretty sure that it was picked up at Hoffman's. I'm pretty sure that's where Howard, Howard is the one that knows for sure, but...
I'll check with Howard then, because he'll be coming on the 27th to paint the interior, so.
To paint the interior of the Legion Building?
Yeah.
When is that? What day?
February 27th. And it doesn't work that deal, and I got it set for a day in March too, so.
Cool.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Otherwise, I'm still trying to coordinate a deal with Automatic Systems, and that valve has worked properly the last three weeks for, they never did anything on it. Nothing, I don't know why, all of a sudden decided.
What, does that?
The one valve that wasn't working in the tower.
Yep.
Decided to work, and, you know, if there's not a glitch, it's not gonna show up if there's anything wrong, but I still have to come and check why the pressure aerator isn't getting the thing. So that's also controlled by the computer program too, so. I've been in touch with Dan, so he's supposed to, well, he's up in the area, like, it'll work out easier.
Who's Dan?
He works for Automatic Systems. He's the...
The vendor, manufacturer?
He's the guru that does the computer programming.
Computer programming for what?
What controls, what controls that system.
Okay.
There's a computer in there that does the bat wash automatically, and tells pressure aeration what pulse, and stuff like that, so he's the one who's got the equipment that can test it, see that it's working, it's getting the right voltage, or...
Whatever, yeah.
That means come online and try to get the potassium permangate back in the system.
So that permangate pump isn't online yet?
Not until that, not until that pressure aerator, pressure aerator is back working properly.
Okay.
Because that helps mix up that.
So what's, what is this Dan gonna cost the city?
I don't know. It's a trip up from southern Minnesota, and then, you know, that's what I'm seeing, if he's gonna be somewhere in the area, so we don't have to pay for a full mileage to and fro. Any other thing, too, that you have, is to report down the water tower. I don't know if you're gonna cover that later, if you wanna do it now, but that's, that is the problem of the water.
Real? Yeah. Last month, and it has been an ongoing case, that water quality was certainly less than substandard visually. Minimum, you know, I mean, it don't look good. So I, you know, it's been that way for a while. I contacted Mike Lurson, who talked to Dave, and there has been some, I found out that there has been some previous exploration discussions, numbers put about the condition and the repair of the inside of the tank, which apparently what happens is the inside of the tank freezes, scrapes off the rust, goes into, out your faucet, into the pipes and out your faucet. On the second page of this MSA, who is the engineer for the city's report, is the estimate of 48,000, close to $50,000. And it sounds like another $15,000 worth of their services would be, you know, so, we're looking at, you know, about $65,000 or so is what my rough addition would go.
63,850.
What's that?
63,850.
Okay. Right, and the cost overruns, and, you know, whatever. It's $65,000 is what my guess is, you know, off the door. That's a chunk of change that, where's the money gonna come from, so. When I talked to Mike, he was under the impression that MSA might have some ideas on where to explore, you know, some funding for this kind of project within the, I don't know, you know, they do this thing a lot, and he said that they might have some windows to look in to see if there's any money somewhere. Have you approached them at all on ideas for funding?
I talked to Brian, you know, the guy came up with this, and this is just an estimate, of the engineering estimate, I mean, do I have to go on on bids, and maybe...
Sure, sure.
It's just a rough estimate to get you in the ballpark, but it is, some money you need to look for. And then also, there would be possibly the, there's a little bit of pitting on the riser pipe in there too, and that might be, but 3M is coming up with a new product that they could maybe come out, so. There's checking for that too, so. But I did, I didn't mention the part about that, you know, the city needs monies. You know, there's, Department of Health has a revolving loan program, but that's a low-interest loan, but, you know, this is something that, you know, that needs to be taken care of. And I mean, the sooner the better, because otherwise, it's gonna come down where, and it's pitting now, or the interior coating's coming off, and it's getting where it's gonna rust, and it's gonna start pitting, and it's gonna pop a hole in it, and then it's gonna need more repairs, it's gonna be welding, and stuff like that, so.
Agreed and understood. Were you able to, was MSA, did they have any ideas about money?
Not yet at this time.
Yeah. When you're gonna do all this, it's near where all the end is built, so. What's the long, if you, if a person seals this and everything, and actually get all these outfits and find out what longevity is on that sealer once it's gone down? 10 years, 20 years, 30 years, where you have to learn how to do it when you go. Just so you know.
No doubt, no doubt. I mean, that's good, one good question.
But I mean, that's when they put another bid, it's just an ID on it, might vary a little bit.
No doubt, you know, I mean, you know, what are we getting for, what kind of bang we getting for a buck? And how's it gonna, how long's it gonna last? I, no doubt.
Because our water tower is 70 years old. The expected longevity of it is 100, 100 years. And if you have to do this every two or three years, within those next 30 years, you're pushing 500 dollars.
Yep.
That's already happened with the water tower. And you'd probably get the other half of the funding. So I think, I think it wouldn't be bad for the council to get at least an estimate on how much it would cost to build a new one, or to, I don't know if they use a new tank on top of what's existing, or what have you, and at least get that part started, so we have something, and then we can put it in for grass, because from what Bernadine had told me, that could take quite some time, because you're on a waiting list. And whether you like our current president or not, he is proposing a $1.7 trillion infrastructure plan. So I'm sure we would, might be able to get some funding from there as well. So I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to get an estimate on either retrofitting this one or building a new one. Because it, I mean, you're, we're almost at the end of life, and depending on what these guys say, how long it take, I mean, how many years we have to spend this 50 grand? This mine all just says, this hasn't, it hasn't been recorded since I've been working here, it's 20 some years, so. You know, it was done before that, so there's probably, I'd say, 20 or 30 year life expectancy on it. Coatings they have now are a lot better than what they had in the past. So I mean, and then that, there's nothing structurally wrong with that tower. When they inspected, all the rivets are tight, bolts are good, there's no rusting. The only thing that possibly could go wrong with the footings, if they checked those out, they seem good. But again, if you're gonna have, get some bids on it, I would suggest that you have the engineer drop specs, so you get some prices, so everything was in the apples and apples.
What does he want for drawn-up specs?
I don't know if that'd be that, what that $15,000 is, or if that's what, because they have to, they'd be inspecting this too, so they'd have an engineer on site.
So they're, they're saying with this...
I don't know what the price is for just specking it out, but he didn't break it down, so.
Brian would be the guy to talk to in regards to finding out how much, an estimate of how much it would cost to, says their services would be invoiced on an hourly basis, and the project should be completed at a total fee of $15,000, but that would be moving forward to completion of the, of the, you know, the coating and the whatever refurbishing that we... Anyway, we gotta start somewhere. So where do you guys wanna start with it? I mean, do you have any ideas on where you wanna start with?
I think we should see how long these coatings last, and how long, how often we have to do it.
Who's we?
Well, once we get the bids in, there's people, because they have to bid on...
Well, they got work.
Correct?
Well, that's what Dave was referring to, is getting specs on which to bid. Getting specifications on what you're bidding, you know. Because when you go to an, a firm, and you go to some guy that wants to paint inside your tank, he needs to know what job's gonna be, so.
Yeah, but we also need, we also need to know how long it's going to last. How often are we spending this $50,000?
Right.
And I'm sure with inflation, it's gonna be more as, as the years go by, I'm sure.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get at how this is gonna work. Who's gonna do what?
Well, when Dave was saying earlier, you said there's a little, how old can that tower go before you... Are you saying somebody says you have to replace it at a certain time?
Well, I'd expect to see it's 100, 100 years.
Is that worth?
It's put in 50, right?
77.
So the water tower was put up in 50?
Thank you, 50, yeah, 68, yeah.
So and where'd you get the 100-year deal? Dave?
Well, that's when I talked to you.
But that's kind of...
I mean, it sounds like a reasonable amount, but, I mean, are we just throwing out numbers? Or, see, what we need to do is, my thoughts on it is that we definitely need to engage this engineering firm to get out what's gonna last, you know, as far as coating, structure, the whole nine yards, you know, you know. We're gonna have to pay these, this is my impression anyway. We're gonna have to pay these guys to write some specs, at least for the inside coating of the thing, so we can send it out for bids. Is that the, am I, like, missing something?
Well, there's no reason that they couldn't give a bid on our tower.
Yeah.
I'll contact Brian, I'll see if we can get a, like, since I said the tower, I'll see what it would cost. I think with that interior coating, I think what a person should also take into account is to do those motion compliance laws on that, or...
Right, no doubt, yeah, for sure.
...the same time, the problem specs up too, so. I can get that, and then, I, this, this can't be done until summertime anyway, because it's gonna be warm enough to do it, so.
It might not be this summer, or even next summer, but it needs to, the process needs to start somewhere.
You gotta get it going, otherwise that water tower...
Yeah, it's not, it's not gonna fix itself like the pump, you know, like the bat wash. So.
And the longer we wait, the harder it is.
No doubt. So thanks for taking that on, Dave. What else you got, anything?
No.
All right. I, going back to, I guess, I didn't know where to put it in, but I have a request from the treasurer here. I, George Klass, can request copies of all financial records from the city of Kettle River. This includes register of check dispersments and corresponding city departments that are charged with those payments, copies of bank statements, copies of deposit slips, copies of canceled checks, and compliance with all data privacy laws. Please include a ledger for the petty cash account. I expect these records to be available by March 1st, 2018. That would be for fiscal, for year January 1, 2017, to December 31st, 2017. All right. Question?
You have March 1st. How would they arrange for you to review them?
I want a copy of them.
You can't take them from here.
Yes, I can. Well, then, why?
Because there's data privacy.
Well, I want you to comply with all the data privacy. You redact any, any information that is private data. But financial records are not private data. Your payroll, whatever, just cross out your names and dates and whatever you need to do to comply. You know about this data privacy.
I won't have it done by March 1st.
When can you have it done?
Try April first.
Huh?
All the information you want there, plus to go through and there, private data. If you wanna hold a budget committee meeting and come here and do it, so I don't have to redact the, the data privacy, you can do it by March first, but I have other work I have to do.
So, so you're gonna have it by April first?
If that's, you know, if you want it redacted like that, so you have the information.
April first it is.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Um, fire and first responder department.
Yeah. I see we have, uh, a resignation letter that we need to discuss.
Oh, okay, okay. And I, I wanna turn line in.
Line two.
Line two, I, George Klassken, do hereby resign from the Kettle River Fire Department effective immediately. Thanks for all, thanks to all for the opportunity to serve.
I have a question on this before you move on.
Oh.
I'd like a motion from the council as to, is this.
Oh, does anybody have a problem with this?
Well, actually, I wanna know.
No, you need to stop.
I need to hear what she has to say, George, I want.
I, I, I understand what, what you're saying, but first of all, I wanna understand what you guys think about my request.
She's asking.
I wanna know what you think.
I think it's out of line.
Why?
If you wanna come here and sit with your budget committee and look at all this stuff, that's fine, I do not believe that stuff should leave the building.
Why, so is there something I shouldn't see?
No.
Are you gonna tell the people?
That's not it.
What is it?
That's not it, I don't think that you should take that into your own. It, it shouldn't leave this building.
What shouldn't leave this building?
The financial records of the city.
Why?
I just don't think it's right.
Why?
Because.
Because why?
Because it can, anybody can see it.
It's public data, it's public data.
If somebody gives, somebody goes, that Jay should go to your house and see it.
No, they're not doing this.
Well, how do we know?
Tina, is there something that you don't want the public to see with the financial records of the city?
If they wanna come, they would come here.
Please tell, please tell the people of the, of the city that they don't want, that you have something that you don't want them to see where the money's going.
That is not it.
What is it?
Isn't that the reason why we put the budget committee, committee together in the first place?
What is it? Stop, stop. One person at a time.
But so you can drop off budget committee.
One person at a time.
Hence there's a personnel committee, hence there's a, uh, planning zoning committee, hence there's all these committees.
Committee and budget committee, that's never met.
So, so you don't want me to see these financial records?
No, that's not what I said.
That is not what I said. So.
Excuse me, I did have the floor, the question I had, I'm not in order, you recognize me, I had the floor. The question I had is, do you want this handled as a mayor, or do you wanna handle as data where I'm charging for all of these copies? That is the question.
So, what you're saying is, is that, okay, that's the question. So, that's what she had to say, so, is there something that you feel is in the financial records that I asked for that shouldn't be seen by anybody in the community, anybody in the county?
If anybody in, who you're coming, wanna see it, they can come here and ask for it. Couldn't they?
Yeah.
So, you can come here and ask for it.
During business, during business hours, people have jobs, so I have a job, I, I don't have, you know, X amount of hours to come and, you know, study the things and then leave, I wanna look at it, whatever, it takes some time, we've got some problems here, okay? One second, we've got problems here of money, we've got a water tower to fix, we've got crumbling streets, somehow, uh, when I was mayor in the first place, uh, twenty years ago, there was a part-time clerk and treasurer and there was a part-time maintenance guy, now it's turned into a full-time maintenance guy, a full-time clerk and treasurer, which only she's here two days a week, which I don't quite understand, and we got two part-timers, so that's three times the amount of people that are working today, is there three times the amount of, of, uh, of work that was being performed in, in two thousand eighteen that wasn't being performed in, in nineteen ninety-eight, ninety-nine? I, this is crazy, the, the, the spending in this town is outrageous, and I'm trying to get a handle on moving forward with it, and you guys are getting in my way because you don't wanna show me where the money's going. What kinda crap is that? One second, Bernadine.
Um, the check dispersments that you asked for, the registers in the back of every month.
Okay, then I'll bring, I'll bring the, the book home and then I'll, I'll take a look at it there.
Okay.
Bank statements, that's gonna take two months to copy bank statements?
Well, no, I have to go through and look at them and.
The bank statements? There's no public data on that, there's no private data on bank statements.
Okay, you, with all the canceled checks?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I, no, I want the canceled checks eventually, but the bank statements, yeah, I'd like to go.
If you want piecemeal, I can get you versions earlier.
April first would be the, the, drop that date on, on the completion of the, the petty cash ledger. Ends and ends on that deal.
The weekly register was on the table also.
You have a balance, you didn't show me where money went from two thousand sixteen.
There hasn't been any.
There hasn't been any disbursements from, in two thousand sixteen, I thought you said there was, there was, there was a disbursement that was recorded in here.
Two thousand seventeen.
Seventeen, seventeen.
You asked for the register for twenty eighteen, last month.
Okay, that's a, good.
But it's there.
Jen?
I just have a question, cause we're, we keep doing this every month. Does it matter whether anybody on the city council, or anybody sitting in this room, or anybody that lives in this community, community requests data, including financials, whether they pay for it or they don't, you do not have to review it here, they are allowed to get it, yes, you do have to redact certain things, I do know this. But does it matter, and do we have to continue the kind of argument, can we just do it and move on? Because I'm so tired of coming to these meetings every month and listening to the two of you battle, that it is exhausting. So can we just do it and move on?
That'd be great.
The harassment.
That'd be great, oh.
But can I, can you, so. Um, I understand, but that's none of my business. What goes on here is actually, you're making it more public than it needs to be. We're here for a reason, I live in this town, we talk about water, my water is shit, and I will tell you right now, that's important to me, I don't care whether you get financials or whether you wanna give it to him, I don't care, I don't care whether you or you are living it.
All right, Jen, thank you.
Let me finish, because I'll tell you what, it's getting annoying, we wanna move on.
I understand, I understand what you're saying. We need to, we need to think about cutting corners here, is what my point is.
We're, we're honestly wasting everybody's, this entire community's time and money.
The only one that's making money here is Bernadine and the council.
George, it's, it's really not acceptable, so why don't we just move on, you have a ton of things on this agenda.
So you don't care, you don't.
No, we do, we all care, but what we do care about is what's really going on in this town, and the drama within the city council is not what we care about. We're so focused on caps, that we're focused on that, we're focused on water, we're focused on whether our bar is making money, we're focused on whether we got a good rank so people can get up in, that's what we care about, we're really getting tired of the tiny things that are being argued in a meeting once a month, if you guys can't wrap your brains around it, we'll do it for you as community, we can do it for you, that's what we're here for, why do you think we're all here? We just wanna get stuff done.
All right.
The mud bottom group, they tried a long way to get here.
I understand that.
So let's not waste anybody, anybody else's time here, let's just move on.
So you think that, that finding out where the money goes is a waste of time?
I can tell you what, I can find out where the money is easily, anybody can.
Then do it.
If, if, if it has to become an argument, George, where you just, just come in, just come in, sit down and look at it, stop fighting it, just sit down.
She has had this information waiting for you since July, and she said that all you have to do is make a budget committee, which, which, which you wanted to do.
You guys, you guys.
Which you wanted to do.
I, I, you see, what it's got to.
You wanted to put a water budget committee, and that's what the purpose of it was.
I'm trying to protect the city's interests and I'm trying to move forward with, uh, good ideas and good allocations of.
Well, where are they, please, please tell us.
I have to make an assessment on where.
You have most of the information that it is.
Move on. April first, thanks. Um, we were on, uh, we were on the fire department.
Yes, you are, you're resigning from the fire department, that's what.
That's what I said, yeah.
Um, I also see that there is another resignation letter from Terry Baum. Um, I haven't had a chance to see it, but, uh.
Yeah, it's in there. Um, so, I guess we need a motion to accept the resignations of George Klassken and Terry Baum. So, motion is made, I'll second it, further discussion, hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries.
Okay, uh, that being said, we are now down to eight active firefighters. We need to have ten to receive state aid, I believe, um, I saw the form last month. Um, I did just turn in three firefighter apps, but as, uh, a lot of you are aware, sometimes they don't pan out.
Yep, well.
So, just, I wanted to, and Nick asked me to make sure you got, the city council's aware that we're dangerously low, and to at least keep it in the back of your mind that we may need to come up with other options besides having our own fire department, cause if we don't get state aid, we're not gonna be able to function.
Which, uh, yeah, it's, uh, been a topic of conversation and, and for a while, you know, and, and volunteerism is down in Moose Lake as well as it, as far as availability anyway, during the day, hard to get people, um, responding and showing up, but, uh, yeah, and the townships are, you know, are footing a bill for something that maybe they, they call nine-one-one and nobody shows. So, uh, they need to be, you know, part of the solution as well, so, um, that, uh, fire commission meeting is a week from tomorrow, the twenty-first of, uh, February, which I'm not gonna be able to be there, cause I'm working, so we need somebody else to, uh, as a representative of the city on the fire commission, to, uh, to, uh, show up a bit possible, uh, a week from tomorrow, on February twenty-first. Any volunteers?
I'm unavailable that night.
You're not available, Dave, Tina?
That's something the acting mayor used to do for Kevin when he was mayor, and I'll do it.
Okay. I think it's seven o'clock.
That one I used to go to, yeah.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Um, yeah, so.
Okay, we've also got, um, a quote for the thermal imaging camera purchase.
Is this the one you want?
That is the one, that's the, the one we asked for last month, and there were just issues purchasing it directly from the manufacturer, uh, so I gave Bernadine a bunch of different vendors, figuring that a vendor will be able to handle.
And this is exactly the one that you guys want?
It is, and that is a little cheaper to, to this company, so.
I saw that.
It worked out to the best, really.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if we need permission again.
I don't think so.
No.
We go with the FYI.
Make it happen.
Cause it wasn't estimated, cause that two hundred came in under the estimate, I think you're good, you're all.
Okay.
Make it happen.
I have a training request. I only have one copy, I apologize, but, uh.
We share, well.
I know. There is, um, fire instructor one and officer one training, being held through March and the middle of April, through Central Lakes College, I would like to attend, um, it's all online and, um, live lecture online, and then one weekend at, uh, where is it? Canbrook, and hand down and stuff, Canbrook, uh, it's a little pricey, total would be like eight hundred and thirty dollars, however, it is all reimbursable through the MVFTD, which we have over seventy hundred dollars available to us, so it really wouldn't cost the city or the fire department anything, the whole thing, including testing and everything is reimbursable, but as it's a higher ticket item, uh, I talked to Nick and he felt it was necessary to get the council's blessing.
Yeah, cause, um, it sounds like we'd have to write a check and then get reimbursed.
Correct.
Okay.
But Bernadine is familiar with the reimbursement process.
Question?
Are you the only one that's interested in attending?
Yes.
Okay, yes, right.
I'll make the motion, I pay eight hundred and thirty dollars for the training, for trial.
With the reimbursement coming.
With the reimbursement, yeah.
Yeah, have we gone, we've gone through this process before, the reimbursement deal?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
Motion is made, I second it, and seconded, further discussion. Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, um, and finally, we had, uh, eight fire calls in January, two medical calls, and we've had one fire call in February with one missed mutual aid call to Moose Lake, and zero medical calls so far this month, and I'm aware of it.
Good.
Any questions?
Um, uh, no, I, I have. Building Department, open here for that, uh, city council. Committees, per Klassken's email request, quote, personnel committee discussion of harassment allegations, what's going on, personnel committee?
Oh, you tell me, we asked for a meeting and you.
Let's do the meeting right now.
You're missing.
I want to make a motion to where the doctor's about.
Motion is made.
I second it.
So we'll talk about it next month. I'm then seconded, um, can you tell us what, uh, what you have found?
No, we're not done concluding our investigation. When we're done including, concluding our investigation, then we will come to the rest of the city council, and then we will formulate a plan, and during that time, while we are formulating a plan, you cannot be here, because this is about you.
You are not, did you contact the lawyer, did you contact the lawyer?
We are discussing, we will be discussing what needs to be done, whether or not there has been, been anything found.
You are not my employer, I'm elected, I'm elected officially, you're not my supervisor.
The council is, has.
Uh, you're just, this is crazy, this is crazy.
While we discuss whether or not there has been, uh, findings with the rest of the council, yes, so we can discuss what needs to be.
So you're putting me on trial, is that what you're doing?
We're putting you on trial.
Then why are you, what, you're.
We're having an investigation.
You're coming up with a closed-door meeting on my.
This is not closed-door meeting.
Yeah, hand up in the air.
One second, guy, um.
We're, we're discussing our, our findings.
Did you, did you, did you contact the lawyer in this regard?
We are discussing, we will be discussing our findings with the rest of the council, whether, where, how to proceed.
Well, what I'm asking.
And giving them the other, the information that was being discussed.
You're not gonna answer my question of whether.
You contacted the lawyer.
You did?
Yes, we contacted our lawyer, city lawyer.
On whose behalf?
On the personnel committee as being your, your investigation.
What did the lawyer say?
I believe this was table, what about that don't we understand, it's table till the next meeting, questions? No.
This is discussion, this is discussion on.
No, you're, you're asking for findings and that.
No, I'm asking for, I'm not asking for findings, I'm asking for, you, who talked to the lawyer?
The personnel committee.
So you talked to the lawyer?
I did.
With Chris.
Yes, we did. How to proceed?
And what did he say?
That's for us, as a personnel committee, yes, until we are done.
Really? Okay.
With our investigation.
So, this is crazy, so you're basically calling the lawyer to. So you're basically calling the lawyer to investigate allegations made by an employee against you, me?
And how to proceed.
So, you're calling on, on her behalf, really?
No, we're not calling on her behalf.
Guy, what do you got?
Why is this being discussed in front of everybody else here when you're saying they're gonna have another meeting? And you can talk about, what the hell do you think, you're untouchable, you're.
I'm not untouchable, I wanna know what.
You caused a bunch of extra stuff, this asking for bullshit.
Just stop right now.
No, you stop, I'm talking.
You're out of, you're out of order, Guy. You're out of order, Guy. I'm gonna ask you to leave. I'm gonna ask you to leave.
You're asking me, no, I'm talking, I'm throwing you off.
When you start swearing at me, you're out of order.
I swear, well, that ain't too bad yet.
No.
What I'm trying to say is, why all the extra numbers you need that you can come here and take?
Right.
Does anybody else have a problem with it, ensure the other council members can come here, vote the files, send them to you.
We already discussed that, we already discussed that, Guy. Please sit down, or please just stop addressing the council.
Well, it's a way to divide, if you think you're untouchable, you cause more shit to be in it. You have resigned to the fire department, you should put me in for bigger.
Just, thank you. All right. Confirmation of hiring, uh, hiring guy, oh, we gotta, we gotta.
We got a motion on the table?
As a table.
Why are we gonna get that into our.
Real irony.
Hell, it's next Saturday, we'll be together.
This needs to go along. Could be better.
Oh, wow, all right, uh, motion is made, seconded, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Got it, Guy. You know.
You're gonna comment on that, it doesn't get affect my work in all the way I feel, I just think.
I understand.
There's a lot of stuff that I brought up that don't have to be done for, for what you're, the way you're trying to ask for. I don't think nobody's trying to hide something, that's what I get, and I don't think some.
Well, I just want, this is the deal, okay, in, in regards to, uh, you know, the, the background with myself and Bernadine has been well-known that we've got some history and it's not good and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm. The cities in, uh, it's the highest taxed city in probably the four county region, uh, we've got lousy water at, at overpriced. Um, we, we've got crumbling streets, we've got a lot of stuff that, that needs addressing and there needs to be some discussion, some starting point of where we are financially. And without that information, we are running blind. That is where I'm going, this has not got anything to do with being untouchable or, or personally, the personalities work into it because I don't know why, you know, I mean, maybe it's from the, I'm a smashed mouth, the way I address things, I'm smashed, but I, I get, I ask for things and I get accused of being harasser, harasser, you know, it's like, you know, and so I just wanna, I just want. The way we're going right now, this city is, is on a road to ruin, is my, my, in ten, fifteen years, the fixed end corners aren't gonna be able to afford to come here, so. Anyway, I'm trying to look at the longevity and the prosperity of the city.
Your questions are not in that one, but the way that you present us are, just keep that in mind.
All right, um. Do we have to hire Guy?
Yes.
Yes, does the town get to vote?
I'm only kidding.
Say that it affect anything.
No, I, I hear the frustration.
Yeah, I ain't gonna hold anything on anybody for what I have.
You would look like you were gonna swing at me, dude.
I probably gonna swing at you and jump that damn wall.
I just wanted to jump out of the wave. Damn.
I just wanted to make sure you're hearing me for credit.
Bullshit, I thought.
No, I think the thing is, George, I think, because it seems like you're asking for more work than it needs to be done when the fix work's already done and it's there, it's the fact I'm looking at. If you have a hard time understanding some of it, okay, so be it, but ask, ask a few questions when you're in, you got a budget committee, you know, they stand. So I'm sorry, but that's sometimes, I'm checking us on the extra stuff.
Yeah, anyway, we got, we, we're, we're in the process of confirmation of hiring Guy Collier for the ninety day temporary worker's position that, that, you know, Dave, you're okay with Guy as a, as a employee, I guess you hired him, so.
Yeah, first off, maybe we interviewed five people, he wasn't most qualified, so.
Oh, all right. All good. Needed motion. So moved. Motion is made.
Appreciate the position too, I mean, I'm right there, so.
It makes sense, it makes sense.
Everybody, I've heard the city was safe for six years.
Makes sense, please, yeah.
But no, I appreciate.
No, it, it makes sense, I do.
Can we like you?
We're working on that.
I didn't change.
We like you.
He's got experience, he will change.
We like you too.
Motion is made and seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, fire department, SLPs, um, any questions about those guys?
Are there any changes from last week?
There are, the requested changes, Kevin.
That's it, that's it, okay.
Corrections, basically.
The grammar change.
Yep, the grammar change, the whatever you ask me to strike.
Clarification.
Yep.
Good.
Yep.
All right.
I apologize getting it out late.
No.
It's a big thing to take, um, thank you very much, much appreciated.
There are, um, other additions that are coming, actually, this, their imaging camera will have to have it.
True.
Um, and we have that washer, gear washer.
Yep.
Um, looking at putting some in for how to clean our gear, maintain our gear, but that can all come.
Yep.
Piecemeal?
Yeah, I can just piece by piece and we just add it to it.
Sure. Do you need, you're okay with it? So is that a motion to accept them?
You can ask for a motion, but yes.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion is made and seconded, further discussion? Uh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Administrator fine ordinance. What is that?
That's follow-up from the discussion we had last month.
So I, I called city, okay, I talked to administrator there, asked him what the, what the difference is between a fifty dollar and a hundred dollar, he's like, oh, there is none, we'll just scratch the fifty, go with a hundred, if we're gonna go with the fee assessment, we'll just go with, you know, just go with the one, the number. And what you had brought up last month, I do think some ordinance should not be fined, uh, that's, I mean, there's an ordinance in there for compost pile. Well, if you're a gardener, you're gonna have a compost pile. I don't think a compost pile should be fined, I don't even think it should be in our ordinance. Unless, you know, if you're starting to create critters that come by, I, I do think, you know, you should, you should be fined for, for that, for that. You know, if you can't keep the critters out of the compost pile, whether they're having compost pile, I don't think, you know, I, I don't think you should be fined for having a compost pile. Cause all gardeners have one, cause they re, reintroduce it into their, their soil. Um, I don't, I don't know what happens put in. But I garden and I have two compost piles, a smaller one and a larger one. I mean, it's not me, it's anybody.
I know, I know, I got a.
So can we.
But isn't that, isn't that gonna mean that it's out of, out of line or something, I mean, somebody's got a lot of spread of, if you got a boxed in decent and it's done right. There shouldn't be an issue, ordinance can come.
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, brat boons or, or whatever, throw it in all over places.
Right, right, but then you can address the person, you don't take.
Yeah, and then the, and the council can address that, I mean, it's, it's pure bar between.
It's, it becomes a notion, yeah, and all otherwise, you know.
And as of, as of, as of right now, I have yet to hear about anything, anybody have a compost pile, it's having an issue.
Okay, so in regards to, I think we were talking about feral cats.
Well, it's, it's not with, it's.
I, that seems to be a problem still.
It, it, it is, well, in the winter time, it's not so much because they.
Right, but.
But it is an issue in the summer time, but the issue is, is, is he will, uh, the person will never admit to it. And you can't, if, if you can't.
Admit to what?
That he, that they're his. You, you won't admit to it, and if you can't prove that they're his, you can't, you can't find it, there, there's, there's no. The only way we can get rid of those is so he has no way of coming to trap them.
He sabotaged, there's somebody sabotaging the traps.
Yeah. Without, you know, letting them know, I don't know, I don't know the, um, the person that has to let, let them know that they're trapping, but with all the traps around, who wouldn't notice? Like they did a couple of years ago.
Okay.
But, yeah, that's, that's, I mean, that's the only way you can do that, get, get them all out is, is to trap them, because he's not gonna, he's not gonna sit there and tell them that they're, they're his, so. And he's admitting it or something.
And he's living there.
And he's living there, and he's not gonna admit to that either.
And, and it's, it's out of.
So the only.
The right balance of the law for somebody to live in a commercial property, so that might be an avenue to approach. I don't know exactly how to do that without his private eye or something like that, I don't know.
Don't hate a private eye, you've seen every type of.
Well, saying that and making a case and, and bringing a judgment are two different things, you know. You know, I, I don't know how to do that.
Can you hear that half of the property was tax forfeit?
Not half.
No.
It's not half, I checked this out, cause I don't know if all that went up, you know. It's not half, he's only got one half of one of the buildings, and the county is having problems deciding how they can handle that. Because he has left just a piece of that building, when they planted that, that building, there's a whole lot, that building sits a whole lot of lots. And he's let taxes go back, that's why we got the one piece, cause that was tax forfeit, that's why we got it. And now, went up there, he said they got one more little tiny piece of the building that's tax forfeited, but it's not the whole building, and I talked to the county.
Burnham?
Huh, yeah, Burnham, and he was, one of his office people, yeah, and they said they didn't know how to, when I went to get that one piece of it, and he said, I said, well, why don't we just. Cause there's a big piece right behind him that's taxing, what to do, and I said, well, why can't we just get that whole thing, and he said, they don't know how to break that up because it's not all tax forfeited. So he's keeping enough of it to prevent him from doing something that's literally. Because they could do the same thing that they did for that piece, cause they can give it to the city. The city can then turn it over to like Montauk, so that it goes under the taxes for the city.
No doubt, they're.
And the county, the county wants to do that, the county really wants to do it.
They wanna get rid of the old co-op building too, they were gonna give it to the city and whatever.
No, but they can give it to Montauk, the city, and then you can give it to Montauk, we can then make it functional. I even have a lot of that building, um, I'm, I've almost got the whole bank thing set up already.
The, the old banking?
Yeah, I've already got almost that.
But, but where do we go to proving that he's living there besides just visit, yeah, with, with, without, uh, you know, like myself and you that live there?
Well, he came up and said to my workers up there, he said, don't you hurt my cats? I think, he's got, he has his cats.
We need to get him a tape.
Does he have a light service or light service or?
Yeah, he has, he has, he had a propane, a five, five hundred gallon propane tank that was brought back there this past summer.
He has light service, so he's got to be putting it out there. And they should be able to almost see how much usage is done out there, so, so, yeah, there's a way to find that a lot, and, um, for.
Yeah, but what's the way? How do we get, how do we, how do we get to the bottom, so that we can gain some traction on this?
Let me get rid of the big bus, I'm gonna get rid of that this summer.
I'm working on it.
You gotta let me.
Maybe or what, you know, it's like.
You're not just saying all of them.
I'm not, I was gonna say, oh, oh, is that a real plan? Oh, okay. I spilled a bean.
What's happening with Montauk, because some really exciting things is happening.
No, no, I, I, I get it, I, you know, it's just, we are.
We're in the bank.
Way over.
Hold on with the, uh, our instances here.
Montauk, yeah, Montauk. He just basically, the administrator says go with the strict hundred, and who they go with for their, uh, administration, administrative officer. The person that, uh, sits and, you know, does the fee schedule, not, sees fee schedule, sits in the, in the meeting, if they, um, ask for a hearing is, they use their county attorney, their attorney's attorney too. So, you know, we would have to ask, how is the attorney? See, I don't wanna, I don't wanna go at, you know, just email one question here and there, I wanna, you know, you know, are we gonna be able to do that? Do we wanna do this, you know, will, is he willing to, you know, be our administrative, uh, person that, that sits, uh, for the, you know, somebody question, comes in.
Resoling, resoling, uh, officer or resoling, what's the problem? Resoling, I think it's called, resoling.
Hearing officer.
Hearing officer, that's it. Um, can, and, and, I would say, I appreciate you following up on the fines, is there any way that we can attach nuisances such as feral cats to the fines?
Yeah, that's, that, that, that's under our nuisance ordinance.
Okay, so, um.
But we can't, but we have to prove.
So what, what about like a really well hid trail camera?
You would have to put it on his property and then, you have to, you have to prove that they're his.
Waste the time.
Yep.
It's too bad, it's the way you're fighting.
The only way to get rid of all the cats is, is to hire somebody to.
Trap them.
Trap them.
And then just get more, by the way.
Yeah.
Just more come in. You have to remove him, he's the problem now.
You used to have rats, at least cats are better than rats.
I haven't.
You used to have those.
Yeah, but not when they're shitting all over, everybody else is gone.
That's yours.
Not mine, but my neighbors, all my neighbors all around me, and, and I see him crossing the street, going on the other side of the street. Uh, God knows the little one over there, um, but it's just not my issue, it's.
Make it more cats, it, it's a public, it's a public nuisance. It's a nuisance to the whole city.
Question. I don't know, I mean, we can talk all night on this issue, but we're not getting anywhere, where are we at with the administrative fine ordinance? Under unfinished business, frustrating.
It is, and I, I don't.
So I, I think, I think what you would want was to, you know, figure out how we're gonna assess fifty or a hundred dollar fine, and I think we got that. And, and I think, you know.
That will be for all.
Nuisance violations.
Public nuisance violations, so how do we write that into their? It doesn't need to be, it just goes on the fee schedule, just like they have it.
Yeah, just, there, there's a, you know, there's a separate article.
Though.
Chapter, that, that comes, you know, that comes with it, just has, has the hearing officer across us, you gotta put that in there.
We already got that in here.
Yeah, we have to hire a hearing officer somehow.
We already got it in here.
Well, we'd still have to get a dude that's gonna.
Yeah, that would be, we would, we would ask our city attorney, if he's willing.
We can do that? The city attorney can act as a hearing officer?
That's, that's what the, um, parle de county, that's they use their county attorney.
Or.
To do their administration.
We're, we're looking at changing our city ordinances.
Right, correct, okay, amending or adding.
And he would, he would write up, the city attorney would write up.
We have it in our ordinances here, that the city engineering utilities superintendent or designated official shall enforce all provisions of this subchapter. So it would be up to those individuals to enforce anything in the nuisance, and then it talks about notice of city council hearing.
I believe that's.
Yeah, but you just have to get the hundred bucks in or something.
Well, we would have to add the hundred dollars to the fee schedule, which I'm gonna have to argue a little bit, because I don't think it's, when we have snow on your sidewalk over twelve hours, is the, are we really gonna find that person a hundred dollars?
Well, you don't show who your sidewalks?
I don't have a sidewalk.
And I think twelve hours is a bit.
So I, I think this needs a little bit more tweaking, the whole, the whole chapter, I think, though.
Yeah.
So what are we gonna do, what's, what's, what's tweaking?
So basically, add some, to track some things, uh, instead of twelve hours, have a, have a twenty-four hour, cause I think twelve hours is way too little time to have somebody, uh, follow your side. Or Brad, Brad, you know, the city comes by and does it.
So who's gonna do the tweaking?
No, it's closed.
Do a tweaker? Do a tweaker? I'm just trying to get some things done, you know, you guys, I'm wasting time for some people, you know, trying to get things done here if you haven't noticed, you know. So what are we gonna do? Yeah, well, that's a good one. You all kick the can down the road thing for next month, oh geez. We get things done around here. Uh, so what?
I. I mean, I, I can go through it, I can take stuff out, um, change things, bring it back to tell the council what I changed, whether you guys like it or not. You can say yay or I don't like it, go redo it. Um, also I have one, one issue, um, of. I, I wanted to go over there on Saturday, but he had already disappeared, um, his chambers. He is, uh, burning something other than wood in his wood stove because it is god awful ranky, it smells like plastic. He's been, this, he, he did it this past Saturday and the last, in the last month and a half, he did it three or four times. That I, that I noticed that was on and noticed. I think a lot of aside, I'm like.
I haven't smelled it lately, but yeah, the gas has been, I, I don't know where to go with that.
I think somebody needs to, I wanted, like I said, I would go over there on Saturday, but he, he had already left and I wouldn't have been able to chance to get back over there and ask him to politely stop because it's making me sick, clearly.
Does the city have a fire inspected? I, I know in my buildings in cities, the city, the fire departments in the city of St. Paul have to come in and inspect our buildings every so often to give us grades and everything. Does the fire department do that here for businesses?
Now, in the, in the ordinances, if my memory serves me correctly, is the, the, the utilities superintendent and the zoning, uh, officer can inspect premises.
That's what, it's a requirement in the city of St. Paul that every year our buildings have to be inspected by the fire.
But what if, but.
And we have to.
I think that, you know, it could be in the ordinances, but I'm not sure that you can gain access to somebody's personal property if they don't wanna let you in. That's, I mean, the, the.
If, if it is my apartment building.
Uh-huh.
They can, they can get access and they can break that gum door if I don't give them access, that's on the.
Well, are you a renter or an owner?
I'm the owner.
Oh.
And they require that I even have a lock box out of my building.
Right, first Todd and then you, okay.
Yeah, do we really wanna talk about going into people's houses and stuff?
Right, that's.
I thought it was his business.
We got, we got some cats, let's catch them, get them spayed and do it.
It's his business, no, we're not talking about him.
You got the property right next to him, right?
Yeah. I think that.
No.
She was talking commercial.
You, you're not, you're talking about Chambers, we're not even talking about that guy.
No, I know, but Chamber.
But anyway, it could be Chambers, it could be you, it could be guy, it could be me.
My apartment building, you have a right to come in there.
You're talking about commercial buildings.
It's not commercial, it's a commercial building.
The thing I was gonna say is, when I was gonna say that you're probably different around here than St. Paul because there are fire departments, probably have somebody within that fire department, I mean, status producer to take her.
It could be.
Whereas here you might have to go through Carlton or zoning.
That's the chief.
She's gonna take a walk through, I'm sure.
Yeah, they, they sent us a letter telling us what day they're coming there.
Yeah.
We have to open the.
Yeah, just wanna know from the small city.
Maybe it's wise just to, you know, make sure that they quit, there are complaint forms, if you smell smoke, it doesn't smell normal, you need, probably need to fill out one of those complaint forms that we have here in LA. Regardless who you are, but that way it can be looked into because if you don't have it in writing, you don't know that it happened. So I, that's my suggestion is that we be using.
We want to see the fire pass like now.
No, I.
He's, he's burning inside his.
Right, his wood stove.
His wood stove inside.
I know, but that's.
Yeah, we have burning.
Burning garbage.
You can call and you smell it, you can call nine one one, we will send out the DNR.
It's smarter than you.
They, they have, they have a right to go in.
Okay, I, yeah, I wasn't aware.
Yeah.
I was just gonna go over there myself and ask him to quit, whether or not he would or not, I don't.
Well, but I mean that maybe it's starting.
They checked his.
By the time I go over there, he was already gone and, you know, I, I hadn't cha- a chance to get back over there.
Yeah, it's.
Anytime if you feel someone's burning garbage or somebody's burning.
Because you can see the big hole, A, A's smoke going across, I saw it.
It's noxious, it's noxious. So. Yeah. Yeah, so anyways, did we get, did we get, are you gonna work on that then? All right, good, thanks. Okay. Uh, two thousand eighteen, looks like area historical society membership tribe, um, they sent a letter of requesting funds or requesting a donation for.
What have we done in the past?
We have to do the business professional one, fifty dollar. Yeah, um, membership has, you have joined the membership from, um, historical society using lots of money and it's a fifty dollar business.
Is that an account that we've got that's active, that's got some activity? Yeah. Yeah. All right, um, let me spend my other. Um, so fifty bucks, motion for fifty bucks to the historical society, I guess is what.
Why make a motion?
Motion is made. Do I hear a second? Measure seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all of the fair, say aye. Aye, my full motion carries. Um, I'm telling you assessor, but I had good intentions, but they, 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 and also, I didn't, I didn't do the training. So I didn't need paper or something? No. I caught you, anyway, we have to stay after. Who's taking, uh, you got, Tina said you took it?
Yep.
So that's two, do we need any more than that?
I took it, but I didn't get a version printed over or anything like that, so.
As long as it's one, exactly.
Oh, okay, you don't need one, okay. And the meeting is.
So you still have to take it?
Mm-hmm.
Because it's just something you gotta do.
Now, this, this meeting is coming up, who's gonna be?
It's twenty.
Yeah.
What is that?
That's April.
April nineteenth.
Yep.
No.
Ninety five.
April fifth.
Sorry, April fifth.
I don't know. They have a form, I can be.
When I was, uh, going through the class, I noticed that we needed to have a licensed real estate agent or professional on the board. Do they, do they, yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, there's gonna be.
Because the assessor is there, he, he's not there to give recommendations if anybody challenges. Uh, having a, a licensed.
Appraiser you're talking about.
Not even, you know, appraiser, uh, realtor professional, realtor or whatever, there that knows home values. Do you know home values? Do you know how to assess homes?
No.
Do you know kingdom?
Well, you can teach a crush course on.
You know, but, but it's, it's not.
So where does that, I'm, I'm not following your, your.
I'm just saying.
Where's that written down, where, how's that figured?
Pick a class.
That was a training, yeah.
It was. Um.
You must by law have.
What's it said? You shall have a leave of terminally comfortable.
Yes. You'll pay. But who are we gonna get to come in during that time? Because we don't.
Is it something new because we never have one?
No.
They come in with.
Yeah, they.
Well, that's, that's if somebody, yeah, but that's if somebody comes by and says, I don't agree with this assessment.
Then the person go, what's his name, well, it's new now, so I can't remember who it is now.
Maybe the old.
Yeah, they go with the person and, and look at their home. And then they come in, so.
Well, there's a couple of people I remember, a guy in his house and his wife is what I remember. Two of the people that were here at the meeting last year and there was another person here. There's like three people from the county that come up. I'm not sure exactly what they have, one's guy's a assessor, appraiser, assessor. And there was two others, I don't know what their function was, but they all apparently needed. We didn't have anybody asking questions or projecting to any appraisal, uh, deals. So like Tina says, it's, it's quick and dirty and, you know, um, you know, talk pretty quick. But, uh, I, I don't know if you wanna. I don't know where to go.
I'll, I'll call the assessor then.
Yeah, maybe there's such a thing, if there is an issue, you could just contact a realtor, got that done?
Yeah.
Yeah, but I mean, you might, you might have somebody contesting their, their assessment on their house.
Right.
But.
Yeah.
But they're, they're, are you, are you talking about appraisers, there, because a licensed appraiser? Because that's the kind of guy that comes out to your house, looks at it, counts the number of bedrooms and rooms and the square footage and that puts a number.
Or, or real estate, realtor, that's also knows property values, stop knowing property values.
Right, now.
Then that's gonna have to be, uh, appraiser.
Well, that's the only way you're gonna get it because you gotta have comparables, they call it comps.
And that's what real estate agents do.
You wanna just call the assessor and piss him. Yeah. Here, fine. What we need. And we do need one, then we do that time. Those are the only two that I know over in the area, I have a house appraised, I've got A and.
I won't call the assessor. Appraisers, there's Steen's too.
Steen and, and.
He and his wife used to.
Yeah.
Can't remember his.
Pete, right? Tim, Steve, Steve, that's what it is. Yeah, so, anyway, um.
That's all we got, right?
That's all we got, right? Motion is made. Get seconded, oh, you too. This is made in seconded, all of the favor. Aye, aye. All is motion carries.
Yeah.
Yeah, you got a cop though.
Girls always tip.
You're gonna get him a box.
You're gonna take. Right, it's all very. You listen to him, eat what you can, then you come back, you eat some more, come back, so it's not something that necessarily.
All right.
So, um, are you getting close to your board?
Sunny.
No.
So did you start and then they say.
Oh, so, okay, because that was the past week of the big career that we started.
Or Wednesday all day.
Yes, now this will help you.
What did your first day of work look like?
With a lot of tremendous.
Yeah, that was the last day, that was the last day of the big career. Yeah, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But then it's not possible money.
Right, right. Yeah, I think.
Like three cats and everything else. Cameron Johnson, that guy, he's. Has it helping him fix it up? The assessments, it makes it a lot simpler.
Younger, younger.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
The heart, George, the heart.
At least for the taking. I don't know.
Like I said, I went over there on Saturday.
Where, where are these guys trying to, where are they, are they on your ashes or where? You, you understand, uh, the, I know they are, I know they are. They're mixing and balancing.
I'm not playing them at all. No.
They're tired of being. They're just tired. He asked you about.
Well. You know, protections and, and designs that are put in place. Let's, let, let it go. So it depends on, you know, what, like you said, whether it's layers in. And I, I've got no doubt that they, they gotta convince, they gotta convince the right people.
I guess they're not arguing with anybody.
No, no, but they need to. No, no, but they need to. Good, good, you know, I think it's a great idea.
Contacted us that wants to.
Cool. From surrounding, um. Well, either, yeah, yeah, your lot or, um, oh, that lot. Or, or, or the pavilion, or, or, uh, plus seventy. Oh, yeah. Well, there's a pavilion over by the rest. Oh, next, uh, yeah, part pavilion by the, by the, by the, by the little kitty park, yeah, that's it.
What do you go to the city's?
You gotta let him give you the bank. So he gives the.
They don't have to use insurance and the taxes.
How do you do that? What's it for him?
Oh, they are, right?
They are, and now, so you'll get a tax for all this, it's gonna be.
You could.
It's a big tax. I just thought it went through my mind, we, we provide, he provides all the supplies that lives close by. He supplies all the supplies, the only thing he's asking us is to go to Lake County.
Together that list.
And give the turnoff and the turnoff fees for the.
Oh.
And then he can have to pay the utilities.
But.
Not aware.
Yeah.
Well, just be even.
It's got structure.
Well, okay, because I'll tell you what, room is already out.
If we could get, well, if this guy can make micro, that's a.
Well, I mean, you've made progress in a lot of areas, so just keep on, pop these deals.
Because we're working.
Oh, I got, you know, um, Kettle's.
Yeah, you're, you're talking. Good.
Right now, but she's gonna be at the.
Oh, okay. Oh, alright.
So he's gonna go to the city council and, and actually is about to date.
Yep. Well, I, I'll tell you what, it all sounds really exciting and, and growth and, and profitable and, you know, uh, putting Kettle River a little bit bigger dot on the map type of deal, you know, I mean, it all sounds really good. The devil is in the details.
That's right, I agree, so, um, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it's, no, thank you, thank you.
Well, I love this town.
Well, thank you.
But we're working, but now.
Oh, gosh, Darren, I was gonna bring it up, wait, time, is he here still? Like, okay.
He doesn't want to like that.
No, he doesn't, okay.
No, no.
Have you talked to Todd about it?
Yes.
Okay.
In fact, I talked to Todd, um, in, in the office of Vern, Vern, uh, Kaden, in my water yard. I happen to be here, in his water bill, and we talked about it at that time, so we were both very surprised when the light came on.
Well, he, I was trying to do it right then.
Right, right, and, um, and so, that, so then Todd saw me at the post office next morning, he was really upset.
He came and knocked on my door, knocked on my door.
That's what he told me.
Yeah.
But anyhow, we agreed that it wasn't worth. Well, first of all, the cost that it's gonna cost a month to have that light on.
Ten bucks, ten, twelve bucks.
And, but, but the, uh, and on the cheap.
Right, I didn't realize it was gonna.
Be as bright as it was.
Well, be as bright as it was and that it was gonna cause, uh, you know, I, I.
Right.
You know, the, the, you know, he was, he was beside himself.
Yeah, he, he was, yeah, he was really upset.
He was upset, yeah.
And I said, turn this thing off if it's gonna cause that much problem.
Right, I thought, I, you know, you come to meetings, I, I was like the citizen, you know, on the, um, city property.
It used to be on.
Ten bucks a month, proximity to city mall.
George, that was very nice of you to do that, it was very nice.
I was doing the right thing, you know, holy smokes.
Yeah, Marsha did the nice thing to get into.
Right, yeah, I mean, it, it worked out, but, yeah, no.
It's not worth.
Yeah, that's not, I forgot to bring it, yeah, no, he was upset.
Thank you for checking it out.
You're welcome, you're welcome. It's like, you can't do anything sometimes, you can't do anything.
That's right.
Oh, God, this freaking nuts.
If you, if you do it, you're wrong, and if you don't do it, you're wrong.
I know, why didn't you do that? I told you last week to do it, you know, it's like, oh, God.
Martha, I'm leaving, and I will see you tomorrow at eleven.
Well, I'll, I'll be here.